Welcome everybody here to our work session today. We would like to open with prayer, so if everybody would stand. Dear kind and gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for this day, Lord, and we thank you for the opportunity that you have given each one of us to serve this great city. We ask God for your guidance, for your leadership, and for your direction in everything that we do every day. We ask God that you would bless this meeting, that your will would ultimately be done in everything that we say and do today. It's in your precious holy name that we ask. Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we have actually been on the council now for, well, getting close to a year. November will be a year. And, you know, we're trying to do the right thing on everything that we do, trying to make sure that we take care of the citizens of Fort Payne. And Wade has graciously put together a capital improvement plan and wanted to present to the council today. So at this time Wade, if you want to tell us about your plan.
All right, thank you Brian. I think we're at the point in our lives here in Fort Payne where we've got to make an important decision. We started last year, even before this time, gathering facts and getting information because three of us are new council members, so we were trying to find out what was going on, how things were looking. We've got two incumbents that came back on board, so the five of us have spent the last nine months together trying to figure out where Fort Payne is going to go. We know where we are, so we want to know where we're going to go and how we're going to get there. So in doing a little research and putting things together and compiling the numbers that we needed to come up with, the things that we need to do, the things that people here want to do, that have been given to us as candidates and now council members, we tried to put together a wish list of what we need to do to go forward. So in starting with that, we go to where we are money-wise. And our general fund revenue, as you'll notice, took a big dip several years ago. We lost several hundred jobs. This city has been so resilient and overcoming what would have totally devastated a lot of other communities. We literally lost thousands of jobs, millions of dollars of revenue, and it's taken about seven years to come back to where we were. We were in a good position, and we're in a stable position now, but we're in a position where we've got to do some additional things to move forward. So the revenues, as you can see, were good, but our fund expenses are moving also. So you can track our revenues and our expenses over the last several years, and they kind of mirror one another, and then when you put them together on the same graph, you get a better idea of where we are, up and down. And you can see the redish color here, that's expenses, and the green color is revenue. So for several years, we've been right at, slightly below, or sometimes quite a bit over, our revenue. So that's not a position you can maintain long-term. It's not been a terribly drastic deal, but there have been years where we have been over bad, and then we cut expenses. I will give Johnny and Red credit, Johnny's been here 21 years and Red's going on nine. They've done a great job of doing what they had to do to run the city with the revenue that we had to run it with. But the sad fact is that everybody around us raised taxes in the 90s and Fort Payne didn't. We've been running on sales tax revenue that was initiated in 1984. We hadn't had an increase since then. So they've done an admirable job of keeping us afloat, but to move forward and grow, we've got to do some other initiatives here. Sales tax is our major general fund revenue. We get some avalour taxes, and you can get a copy of the audit if you want to see exactly what our revenues and expenses are. But you see, in '08, '08 to '09, we went down 10, we bottomed out, then we started climbing back up. So it took seven years to get back to where we were. That's seven years of lost revenue, so we had reserves in place that offset that. They've maintained that balance, and we're to the point now where our reserves are getting to a point where we need to work on them. One of the things a lot of people talk about is, oh, you've got alcohol tax, and that's quite a bit of money. Well, it's not as much money as you think. Alcohol tax peaked at $374,000 and has steadily declined. It's going down again this year because everybody around us that goes wet pulls sales from Fort Payne. Of that $374,000, and then this past year was a little over three, we give that all to the schools and to other entities. So the city gets no benefit from that money whatsoever. We just handle that money. We receive it, and quarterly we give it out. So we give the schools 75%, and the other 25% goes to economic development and other things, and I think we basically banked $500 off of that one year for handling and interest and whatever. But our bond debt, on the other hand, is a number that you want to see go down. So you can see in '08, we had 23.8 million, and '15, it's down to 13.2. We're on track to pay our bond debt off in '25. Okay, '25, that doesn't sound like a long time, but we're paying it off with a few million dollars at a time. That money comes in, it goes out. The problem with our bond debt issue that I see is, everything that we got those bonds for has now got some age on it, and we can't repair or replace some of these things without additional money. So as we continue to pay our bond debt down, we've got to look at what we're going to do to get money in to do new things, to expand our beneficial things for our citizens. So yeah, our sales tax is going up, our bond debt's going down, but our revenues and expenses are kind of paralleling each other to the point where we're not gaining any real ground there. We've got one bond that pays off, they've got a payment next month, and then we've got one more next year, and that will free up $750,000 a year. We've got another bond that pays out, and it's way on down the road, it's like six, seven years out, so it will potentially save us $800,000 a year, but we're talking about six, seven years down the road. We've got to make some decisions now to see where we're going to be in six or seven years. We can't wait to get that far. So as our bond debt comes down, we're in a position now where one notch, I believe Randy said, one notch below our top rating that we could have as a bond-capable entity. So we're in a great position to get some money if we need it. So if you're going to get bond money, what are you going to do to pay for it? So we've got some decisions to make. This is the most graphic chart that we've got, is our cash reserves, and you see the steady decline there. And that is to offset drops in revenue or purchases of capital. So yeah, we peaked out in 2010 at over $12 million, but we're down a little over six now. So that's a serious decline. What we're having to do now is basically take money out of our savings account to pay some of our bills. We're having to shift money around to do certain things. So if we're going to get in a position to do something, now's the time to do it, and this is one of the main reasons we've got to do that. And you say, well, you've got six or seven million dollars in the bank. That's not a lot of money when you've got a multimillion-dollar facility that you have to keep up, and that's the city of Fort Payne. Our payroll runs close to half a million dollars every two weeks. We've got benefits. We've got employees that want to get raises eventually. We gave them a raise this past year. The raise that we just gave in November and the insurance that we assumed to increase them cost the city over $300,000, but that was the right thing to do, and we did it. We still passed a balanced budget. And to do that, we had to eliminate over a million dollars' worth of capital requests in one meeting, and we did that. We sat down, we took it on, we did it. We gave our employees a raise, and we still passed a budget that showed basically a $70,000 surplus if everything goes well this year. So when we get into the situation where we're at now, we've got to have things that we have to do. We've got short-term projects, and I say short-term because I used to do three, five, 10, and 20-year plans. Our plan right now is one to five. This is what I consider a short-term project, something we've got to fund in the next short term. Number one is an Aldoc project that you're going to be seeing here pretty quickly. When the state comes in and brings us our funding agreement, we're going to proceed with a totally revamped and new interchange system at the 218 exit. You will have both sides of the interstate be totally redone. Airport Road and Jordan Road will be lined up facing each other, and there will be turn lanes put in place where people can turn from all four directions with a turn lane. And if you go to Lowe's, you can actually get back to Fort Payne without waiting a day to do it, hopefully. Our next thing is our sewer plant. The bond that's paying off next year was primarily to fix stuff at the sewer plant 20-plus years ago. Things wear out, but things at sewer plants wear out quicker because they're 24/7, 365. There's always something going through there. You've always got to deal with maintenance issues. So to work on that plant, get some things fixed that we need to fix, and do some improvements over there, we're looking at around $2 million there. Next, we've got the police department building, which was built in the 40s. It now houses our 911, our police department, our jail, the theater. We've got to do some major work on the marquee, and we've got to make a decision on how we're going to redo the front facade of that. What we'd like to do is go back to retro, that looks like neon, but it's not neon because it is just so expensive to keep up. We want to keep the look of that theater because it's part of our downtown heritage and our culture. The Doe Building is the building at 5th and Godfrey. We've agreed to purchase that building, turn it into a military-style museum right across from where Patriots Park is going to be built, but that's going to take money to purchase and renovate. We're going to take the metal building off of it. It will be a freestanding building once again, and then the metal building behind it will turn into our maintenance shop for our building crew. They will have their own building where they can store their stuff and work out there. The Coal and Iron Building has to have the total upstairs finished. We're downstairs, complete nearly. Upstairs has got to be addressed. We want to try to do that this winter. We've got our crew that's going to do that, but it's going to take money to do that. The pool needs major renovations or a look at replacing. It was built back in the 80s. It was built on leased property. The city had to go back and buy the pool back from the property owner, so it is actually ours now, but it's built in the 80s. So 30 years is a lot of wear and tear on things that get a lot of use. The sports complex was built, I think, in 1986. The pool was built right after that. The complex in its heyday was as good as anything in Alabama, something we were all proud of as we had our kids go through it, and now my grandkids are playing up there. But you can't have anything last 30 years without having to have some upgrades. We've got to have major renovations to the bathrooms and the concession area. We've got to address the situation there of how we're going to do and how extensive we're going to go and what we've got to build to do. We had a major electrical deal we had to fix this year. Johnny was instrumental in getting that done. So everything up there has got to be fixed. And what a lot of people don't understand, and we were there when it happened, and Johnny saw this, they built that place as good as they could with the money they had. They got a lot of donated money for the soccer fields and the ball fields. So there was wire buried all over that place that was direct buried wire, but it's got a lifespan. Well, we're in its lifespan now. So we've got to address whether we've got to redo all that with conduit and wire, how we're going to do that, things like that, and they all cost a lot of money. So we've got a lot of stuff there. I'll just kind of assign a million dollars to those projects, and it would take much more than that, but it would take that just to minimally get those to a point of doing something. Our sanitation department is a point in their lifespan where we've got to expand the footprint in a few years. We've got a bank of a million, too, to close the current landfill, make it a nice, big, green, grassy field, move up the valley. We've got to buy some more property to move some holding ponds up there to catch our runoff. That's all going to take money. We took a garbage truck we needed out of the budget. We've got to put that back in. That's a quarter of a million dollars. We're in a roll-off truck. We've got a roll-off truck that's making 160 trips a year hauling materials. It's paid its way, but it's getting worn out. If you could see the miles and the hours on the fleet at sanitation department, you would be surprised that they run as efficiently as they do. They do generate revenue to support themselves, but we're to the point where we've got to make some capital investments to improve the fleet over there. So the Aldoc project. These are the motels, and this is dumps. This is going north on 59. When we get the next big pretty picture, it will be around about here, around about here, and this road will shift over and line up. Five million dollar project, we've been asked to commit $1 million to it. The next project is a sewer plant and infrastructure. This plant was built way before me. I remember back when I was a kid, the sewer plant was at South Y. We've come a long ways from there. I don't know that we've had a serious ride-up in your tenure, have we Robin?
Um...
A serious ride-up.
No.
Now, that's about unheard of for a plant that handles what they have. During the heyday, when we had all the dye houses going and all the caustic chemicals and all the stuff, what a lot of people don't understand is, to get that to the point of reception, we've got a lot of miles of pipe, we've got a lot of pump stations, we've got a lot of things that have to get that stuff there. When it gets there, it has to be put back in the creek cleaner than the creek water. It takes money to do that, and they've done a great job of doing that. But this is actually the creek runs by the plant, and that's where it's monitored. They test daily, several times a day, depending on operations. But this plant's got to have some upgrades. Nothing like it was years ago, but it's going to have to have some money. So you're looking at a couple of million dollars will disappear real quick when you start fixing stuff over here at what it costs in today's prices. The police department was built, good Lord, in the 40s by wheelbarrows and hand-holed concrete. They built scaffolds around that building. The theater, we all remember the theater. I remember going to movies there, and my son got to see E.T. there when he was two years old. And it was a new movie then, that's how that goes back. I remember going back and seeing Jerry Lewis as the absent-minded professor, and it was a horror movie to me, I was so young. It was a comedy, but it scared the dick out of me. The Doe Building was built in 1887. It's one of our oldest standing landmarks. We're fixing to take possession of this year, and it needs some TLC to get it back where it needs to be. The Coal and Iron Building is the heart of our downtown boom days district. We've got the downstairs fixed, it's getting some tremendous use. The upstairs, we want to convert that into teaching art lofts, something that's culturally diverse, you know, teaching studios for all different disciplines. The pool, it's going to have to have some major upgrades. So all of these are going to take money. And like I say, the sports complex itself, we're talking about a vintage 1886 deal that was good as it could be in its time, and it's adequate now, but does Fort Payne want to stay adequate? That's what we've got to ask ourselves. Do we just want to stay mediocre in some areas because we were great at one time, and we've kind of got by and got to the point where we're adequate? So if we want to get better, we've got to do that. The police department has glass-blocked windows that leak like everything. This is the jail. We have our own jail. A lot of people don't even understand that Fort Payne has its own jail. 911 is in the basement. The detectives are in this area, and the police chief's on the other corner of the building. So this building was built in the 40s. It's got to have some major renovations. We've got to put a new entrance over where the police officers come in and out several times a day. It's been damaged by storms and whatnot. So that building's going to need some TLC. The theater, we all love the theater, but we know this baby right here has got to have some updates. The lights, they work, we're keeping it going. The building looks well for what we're able to do to it, but if we want to make that place a showcase, again, it's time to decide how far we want to go. And everything I'm telling you right now is something that we're going to have to price and prioritize. So I'm just giving you the list of things that I'm looking at and we're looking at that we've got to address, and then we're going to have to take those on. The Doe Building, the old casket warehouse, it's been called everything. It was last used as Shire's Holery. We're going to take this part here off, keep the building in the back, and that will be building maintenance. So this building, we hope to return it back to windows where the holes are blocked up. You can go by there and see it's got some structural bills, it's got cables that are literally holding it together. That's not something you need to be as nervous about as you think about. It's basically put in there years ago to stabilize things, and depending on how it goes, these were bay doors, and they actually had a fire in there. I've got a picture in one of the landmark books of this actual building on fire. And my father-in-law, who is now 78, rode to that fire with his daddy, who was a fireman, and stood across the street and watched him put the fire out. That building's had several functions over the years, but I think it will be a tremendous asset to us as a historical building to bring back. We've got so many different military connections in this town. We've got generals that were born and raised here. A lot of people don't understand how many famous people we've got that are from here, and let's showcase them. Coal and Iron Building, like I say, this whole upstairs, we had a kind of a work session, walk-in tour, and people were amazed that it's in as good a shape as it is because it was stabilized. Johnny and his crew stabilized the building, addressed the roof first, then we got the outside where it's in good shape, outside. But if we're going to finish upstairs, those are some high ceilings, a lot of wiring, a lot of plumbing, a lot of hard work, right Buck? And we want to do that. The pool, this is our city pool, built on leased property. And then we came back because we didn't have the money to buy it at the time. We leased the property, used some grant money, built the pool, came back in 2002, bought the property, and now it's ours. So this is just three views out. This is looking west, that's looking east, and this is looking right over the corner where you've got the little kiddie pool. It's got the big diving board, the short diving board, and then it's got the lanes for competition. The building to the right up there is the pump house, so to speak. So we've got some issues to address there. Sports complex, like I say, those buildings were built in the 80s. It's time that we're going to have to spend some money on, and we've just got to decide how much we're going to do and when we're going to do it. We definitely want to do it off-season, so we're looking at another winter project. So we can't have Buck and his three guys working seven different places. So we've got to prioritize some of these things and see what we're going to do and when we're going to do it. Sanitation, it's hard to see in this red outline, that's how much property we have at the landfill. Guys went back a few years ago and bought some more property north of there. One issue that we have is we've got some property right here we don't own that we're going to have to own, so we're going to have to buy that in the next few years. But sanitation has got to have some money put back for future expansion, for the footprint expansion, for permitting, for closing the existing. Road maintenance, our road commissioner Johnny and Red ride the roads every year and get with Tim, and they try to prioritize and fix all the roads we can. But the problem we have is we've got 192 miles of streets in Fort Payne that are ours. That's not counting US 11, which goes all the way through town from one city limit to the other, and 35. Those are both maintained by the state. They are coming in this year to pave from Wade Gap up at Whitehall all the way down to 49th Street. They're going to pave that section, so the big sinkhole at Quail Hall Road, hopefully will get fixed and paved by the state because it's their road. The state is also coming in to mill and patch Galt Avenue where it's sunk in in so many places like 8th Street South and other places. Those are state roads that have to be maintained by them. But we've got 192 miles ourselves that cost $62,000 a mile to pave. We've got a new machine, and the reason it's 62 is because we've got a new machine, and Tim can take the error factor out of the old machine, and it was $65,000 a mile. Now we can actually do it efficiently and properly, and it's 62,000. We try to get around five miles a year. We don't put a number on that, we just try to pave everything we can with the money that we have that year, and it averages plus or minus around $300,000. But if we go at the rate we're going, it'll take 38 years to pave every street in Fort Payne one time. So some of them have to be paved every 10 years. Some of them will last 38 years, so you have to, again, prioritize them. So then the next thing, we've got improvements that we need to do. Those are short-term deals. Here's some of our other stuff. The sewer to northwest Fort Payne, the exit 218 upgrade, I just showed you the picture of. The MAPCO, we've talked about purchasing that. We've got a verbal again that they're going to let us buy it, but they hadn't told us how much for. So we've got an appraisal coming, we're going to try to purchase the MAPCO. Then we've got a demo, we can clean that lot up and do something with it, so that's going to cost money. The mayor's been working diligently on the old hospital. We've got it tested, those samples are off when we get those reports back. It's kind of crazy in one sense, but the samples have got to come back, they've got to say it's bad, and then we've got to take ownership of it to get money to clean it up. But that's in the works. We don't know how much money we'll get, we don't know how much money it will take, we don't know what the use of that building's going to be. So that is one of the things that's in progress right now. The Cobble Building was given to the city at 8th and Galt North. There's been some discussion about turning that into an entrepreneurial center. There's some interest in doing that. Right now it's shuttered up, and we're having to mow the yard and put roundup on the grass to keep it from looking so bad. So that's going to have to be addressed. The landfill expansion is going to have to be addressed. That's buying property. The sports complex, my thinking, and I'll show you some pictures in a second on that, we've had the same three soccer fields there since the 80s. We've got over 750 kids playing in soccer program. We've got little league ball games, we've got big ball games, we've got softball games, we've got everybody competing for parking space and playing space up there. So if we can come up with a way that we can build a new standalone soccer complex, I'll show you in a second where that could be. Those three soccer fields could then be turned into three more baseball fields and a miracle field that I showed you a picture of. So that's baseball and softball improvements. All of that can be done with a three-phase, three-prong attack. We want to increase paving, and we do not want to say that, hey, we're going to pave 10 miles a year, we're going to pave 12. We can't say that because some roads take more work than others. You may have to rework one before you pave it. So we may have a year where we do eight miles, but it's eight really critical miles. We may have a year we could do 15. We don't know, but we know we've got to increase paving. If we're going to spend $100,000 or $200,000 on an old swimming pool, why don't we look at the possibility of building an aquatic center that would bring in some revenue and bring people in here, and we'll show you some of that stuff. Right now, we don't have basketball. We've got four tennis courts in there at the high school. We've got some at Terrapin Hills, but there's quite a bit of use on those. The military museum, again, the Doe Building, turn that into what it needs to be. And then we've got property over here by Jefferson's that was given to the city that we have to fill and bring it up above flood level so that it can be developed and turned into commercial property. That's estimated at $100,000 just to get it where it's marketable. We want to get a green space. Everybody wants to talk about, hey, we need something to do. If we have a green space, which is basically a bike and hiking, walking trail, Will's Creek would be the ideal place to do that. The miracle field is basically a handicapped, accessible ball field. It's set up in the configuration of a T-ball field because it can be used for T-ball. It's basically a concrete field with a rubberized painted finish that people in wheelchairs, walkers, crutches, anybody that has to walk on totally level ground with no trip hazards can play ball on that. They have leagues forming up, we can look at that, and it can also be used for T-ball. So it's not just a once-in-a-lifetime deal. You can use it however many times a year you need for whatever you need to use it for. If we can clean up Will's Creek, and I say watercraft, watercraft is a canoe, a kayak, a raft, or like us good old boys used to talk about, a truck intertub. But if you can get things for people to do that are entertaining and not destructive, get them to come here and do something. There are a lot of people in Chattanooga and Huntsville that like to go to the mountains. We've just branded Fort Payne as Alabama's mountain town. Give them something to do when they get here. Mountain bike trails, we have enough property at the landfill right now. We actually own from Glenwood Cemetery all the way to the interstate and then north up that ridge. We can put mountain bike trails and hiking trails in property the city already owns. We don't have to go to the side of the mountain or up the mountain. We can do that later if we need to expand that. But I think we can get enough easements that we could actually at some point in time go all the way from Glenwood Cemetery to Donahoe Chevrolet in those ridges, bypassing the shooting range where nobody gets knocked off their bicycle. But there are logging roads in there already that could be converted fairly easily into trails. You don't have to build a road there. They just need to have something they can ride. I'm not talking about racing bikes, I'm talking about mountain bikes where you ride trails and you walk and you hike and you backpack. Our pre-K program, the Child Resource Network, the kids at the Child Development Center deserve better than they're having to be housed in. That's the best we've got right now, but that's the old, old high school. And if we can expand things and get things where space opens up, we can move those kids out of the old Child Development Center into a newer facility and improve and enhance that program, so that gives our children additional benefits. Right now, we have senior bingo, one Wednesday a month. We can expand our programs for senior citizens where we can go weekly. We can have bridge tournaments, whatever. We want to poll the senior citizens, see what they would like to do, and give them an activity where they come and meet, and we feed them lunch, and they go to the house, and they've met people, they've got out, they've exercised, they've used their mind. Playing Scrabble requires some brain work. Anything that you can do to stimulate physical and mental activity is beneficial to senior citizens, and we can do that plus lunch, and it won't cost us that much money. We can put a price tag on it, but I guarantee you we can do that. And we can expand and enhance our schools, which opens up some avenues for some of these other projects. other projects. The sewer to Fort Payne on the northwest side, here's where it goes to. Here's where it comes from. This is the sewer plant, way down here at the bottom. This is Fort Payne, running north to south. This is the old Earth Cranes, the sports complex, the school facilities all up there. There is no sewer other than what you see in blue lines. This blue line goes over to the old DeSoto Hosiery, comes down to Dead Man's Curve, and then goes down this blue line, and you got pump stations. You got a pump station up here, we're all sewer here, has to be pumped up here, comes down here out, comes over to the airport to another pump station where it's pumped again. These are called four, which mean they have sewer under pressure. You just can't go out there and tie into that and put a pipe in it, can you, Robert? That makes a terrible mess. Those pipes were literally so worn out years ago during the heyday of the, of the sock business that some of them are paper-thin. The reason they're still working is because the load is down on them. So in 2002, Johnny and his crew did a study and had this plan developed. These are all gravity sewer lines, which is the way you want to go. You want it to go downhill with just the flow of water and not have to pump it. It was done in four phases. The first one was down here from the sale barn to the plant. The next one was from the sale barn up to the airport. The next one was from the airport up to Dead Man's Curve. And these all ran Will's Creek. Because if water run downhill, other stuff will too. So you make it a gravity system, take these pump stations out of the mix, save a bunch of money annually on that process. So all of these were done, and these were priced. This phase is totally new. This is from Dead Man's Curve up Will's Creek, out the new Forty-Ninth Street, to the pump station at Earth Cranes. If you put this in, that's an all-gravity line, it would accommodate Terrapin Hills Lagoon, take it out of a deal where it's basically having to treat the affluent at Terrapin Hills, one-hundred-and-sixty-seven and thereabout households, and then it goes back into the creek. There's some issues there, that's a private system, but that's the best they got. You put this gravity system in, you open up this whole part of Fort Payne to development, residential, commercial, whatever. There is no sewer there. I thought I, I hope everybody understands. There's no sewer anywhere in here. It's just Terrapin Hills down to a lagoon. So you put that in, and these have been priced out. To get the most bang for the buck is to run sewer where there is none. So that project in itself is six-point-eight million dollars. So if you do a ten-million-dollar bond issue, you put this sewer up here, and that gives you a little over two million dollars, a little over three, depending on what it works out, to go to the sewer plant for upgrades. So that's all done in one fell swoop. We've got a bond payment right now that's seven-hundred-and-fifty-eight, thereabout thousand dollars a year. It pays out next year. If you get ten million dollars of sewer bond money, it's paid for out of the sewer fund, not the general fund. That payment would drop to five-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. So we would cut two-hundred thousand dollars off the burden of the sewer fund to pay that bond. Fix a lot of stuff, cut some costs down. So there's ten million dollars you need, but it's gonna cost you half a million dollars that we don't have right now. In one more year, we're gonna pay that bond off, we could set this up where the next year that payment comes due. So we do all this sewer work right here and basically save two-hundred thousand dollars a year after next year. So that's one option. Two eighteen, like I said, five-million-dollar project. They ain't gonna do it if we don't give them some money. We done tried to negotiate, but they want a million dollars. Johnny offered them seven-fifty, but they held firm on their million dollars. So we're gonna do that. That is gonna be so beneficial to Fort Payne, you won't imagine the, the effect when it's over and done. The MAPCO, we've gotta buy it, and we gotta get rid of it. That's gonna cost money. We've gotta assign a value to that. The old hospital, that's gonna cost money. We don't know how much on us, how much on federal government, we just don't know. That's an unknown entity, but we've gotta be in a position to do that when the time comes. So that's gotta be assessed to value. The Cobble Building, if we put that into private ownership, that's off our books and we're good. But we just want to make sure it goes into private ownership and the shutters come off and it goes back into being a viable building again. We don't want it slightly shuttered up on Galt Avenue, three blocks north of our historic district. That's still our historic district, far as I'm concerned. The landfill, we gotta buy this piece of property and this piece of property. We don't know what that's gonna cost. We'll leave that up to our attorney. We've tried to buy it several years, it just was not for sale. But we've got to have that to move these holding ponds over here, up here. Because our runoff will go north instead of south, so we've gotta have it. We own all this property here, we may be able to get some options and some easements on some of this. So we've got the property to expand our landfill now, other than these two pieces of property. So that's a value we're gonna have to assign. The sports complex. Currently as it sits, here's the old Earth Cranes, here's our three little ball fields, our park area, a big softball, and these three soccer fields. That's our soccer, that's our soccer, baseball, T-ball, softball complex that we've got. Actually a multipurpose complex as it stands today. This is it in a wider picture, but if you'll see, we haven't owned this property right here. And it's kinda funny, we built this on leased property. Then we had to go buy this property, give it to Earth Cranes for the deed to this property. Then we got it back. So now we own this and this. We did own this, and we just got paid off for it this year. So that's the money that's been coming in that's not gonna come in anymore. So we own this nice hayfield, sorry Buck, but we own this nice hayfield right here. This is a wetland which can't be built in or disturbed. This is a spring up here that comes down through here that can be routed down this way. This would be a tremendous soccer complex. It's still in driving distance and walking distance of the old soccer complex, but if you get these three fields here, how many can you get in here? We maybe possibly, uh, put a full-size high school competition-sized field there. We don't know. You make this a soccer complex, expand that ability for our kids to do things there. Pee-wee football, we have a hundred-and-fifty kids, uh, boys and girls, we got a lot of cheerleaders that think it must pee-wee football as the boys do. They don't even have a bathroom to go to when they practice now. They have to go to the high school concession stand or the MAPCO to use the restroom when they practice. So we, we want to address that. So you know, there's, there's nearly a thousand kids just between soccer and pee-wee football that could benefit from this property being turned into a full-fledged pee-wee football soccer complex. Once that's completed, these turn into three or four more fields, depending on what you size, what size you put on them and how big you make them, and how you want to go with that. So if you're gonna expand something, here's a bigger picture of that property. This property could possibly be acquired from Old Stratton's parent company, which would square that off. But this whole piece of property, that's roughly fifteen-hundred by five-hundred feet of usable space, not counting the slopes and the spring and whatnot. So that would be right across the street from what's projected as the new elementary school. They'd go hand in hand. If there's construction done over here and they have excess material that they need to remove, it'd be nicely removed right across the street. Working hand in hand, partnering with our other entities. Increase paving, that, that's about all you can say. We need to increase paving. The aquatic center, we've got a nice field that was, uh, developed just north of the rec center. It's got four backstops, primarily used for practice for soccer and stuff now. You build a nice aquatic center there, and I'm talking about an aquatic center. A new outdoor pool, a full-fledged water park, not a splash pad, but a water park. And these, if you want to go on the internet and Google up Coleman, this is theirs. They have since added another big slide over here. That brings in a hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollars a year. It gives people a lot of things. It takes everything from little kids to adults, and here's my thinking. If kids will drive from Adarful, Georgia to get killed out here in the canyon doing risky stuff, let them come down here and slide one of these sixty-foot slides for a few dollars and eat a hamburger in town before they leave. It's safer for them, and it takes work off the rescue people. People will come to this. Coleman's is right up the road from Spring Valley Beach in Bluntsville. It's rated as the number-two water park in Alabama, and it's within thirty minutes of Coleman's, and it still brings in nearly two-hundred thousand dollars a year. This is not a splash pad, this is a water park. This is a big bucket that comes down and dumps on a thing, and it dries water everywhere. So nobody gets knocked down by the force of, so even little kids can play in here. It's got playground equipment in the water. It's got a little lazy river. This is another one. I'm just showing some examples here of the slide configurations that you can get. Some of these are in very rural areas on just basically what was a city pool, and they bought a slide and put on it. So if you're gonna build an aquatic center, build you an aquatic center. That would have to be priced and prioritized. Our basketball and tennis complex, we don't have one. We don't have an outdoor basketball venue right now. We have very few indoor basketball venues other than the rec center. The school kids play in the school gyms and whatnot. This is our four tennis courts that we have, and they're all at the high school, and I went and looked at them the other day. They're in pretty good shape, but they need some improvement, but they need some more tennis courts. So if you're gonna build something, if you're gonna build an aquatic center up at Will's Valley, then take the old pool, turn that into your basketball tennis complex maybe. We own all the property, we can do some configuring over there. It's off the main drag, it's in the center of town, so you've got basketball potential, you've got restrooms and concessions down there if you wanted to do something. So that's already in place. Make that some tennis courts and basketball facilities there. Our military museum, we did this for the mayor because he wants to put a tank at Patriot Park. Our military museum would be the Doe Building. We can't get that in there, it'd be across the street. But if you've got Patriots Park that's basically designed to honor every patriot, which is military, fire, police, EMS, everybody that's considered a patriot, what would be better than to go right across the street in our eighteen-eighty-seven vintage military museum that's got stuff from Revolutionary War, Civil War, anything that anybody here's got a tie to. People can literally bring you things to put in that museum, and you receive it in much like the depot does. And you can have grandpa's uniform from World War I on display properly in a climate-controlled building. Jefferson's property, this is Jefferson's right here. We have this whole piece of property right here, but this is a creek, so it's gotta be brought up to a level where you can develop that. That's roughly a hundred thousand dollars, just to get it where you can build on it. Green space, that's how simple it can be. Something that people can ride a bike on, walk on, push a baby carriage on, jog, no motorized vehicles, no dirt bikes, no four-wheelers, none of that, they can go ride somewhere else. We're talking about passive, easygoing, laid-back recreation. Will's Creek would be the ideal place to do that. The miracle field that I talked about, this is an overhead shot of one. Huntsville just built one, there's several in Alabama, but this is basically just a concrete, rubberized, painted finish T-ball field that has no trip hazards. Can you imagine that in Fort Payne? And right out here, outside the outfield fence, was a totally handicapped, accessible playground, which means all kids can use it. We have some playground equipment in the city park, thanks to Game Time and the city and some clubs partnering up, but we've just got a few pieces there. If you built that whole thing handicapped accessible, kids smaller, they don't know what's handicapped, they just know they can play on it. If handicapped kids can play on it, any kid can play on it.
Even seniors.
Yeah, yeah. Senior citizens could actually walk up instead of having to go upstairs. But this is something that's, that's near to my heart. The Miracle League is formed up, and they actually have leagues where people, and this is not just children, this is adults. We all know adults who are handicapped, who are challenged, that need something to do to get out. And you, you can go back and look CBS News last week, a guy in San Antonio built a whole water park for handicapped kids because his daughter could not speak. I don't know if she had some form of autism or what, but she went to a birthday party at a, at a swimming pool, and the kids had nothing to do with her. And he said, the look in her eye broke his heart, that she, she was like, what's wrong with me? She couldn't tell him that, but it broke his heart. And he built an eighteen-million-dollar water park for handicapped people. And to see those kids riding around in wheelchairs and the splash pads and stuff like that, it, it'll warm your heart. But if you'll take care of the least of these, they'll take care of you. Will's Creek, that's how much through our valley, Will's Creek encompasses. It, it runs from north to south, folks. We all know it comes through here, but a lot of people don't know how many zigs and zags it makes. It's perfect for canoeing and kayaking, but you can't get through it in some places because of the debris and things like that. Two things here, if you clean it out, it gets the waters out of the valley quicker, makes it safer, cuts our flooding down. You also make it a navigable waterway, so people can canoe, they can raft, they can kayak, whatever. And this, if you want to look at a close-up of this, I've got some, but that's how much that creek affects our, our community here. If we go to the prospect of doing this gravity sewer line, you get the easements along the sewer to do the sewer line, you put your green space, walking trail on the same property. Once the sewer line's buried and covered up, you basically put an eight-foot-wide road down through there so that people can inspect the sewer line and see what's going on, and you close off the entrances where people can only get on it with bicycles or things like that, and you've got your green space. Mountain bike trails. Doesn't seem to be a big priority for a lot of people, but for the people that it's a priority to, it's one of the biggest ones they have. It doesn't have to be a mountain bike trail, it just needs to be a trail that's suitable for mountain bikes, and if you can ride a bicycle on it, you can hike on it. And we've got as much elevation in this ridge complex over here as the side of the mountain. Some of these ridges are steeper than the side of the mountain. So we own that property. We could work out property owners, hopefully giving us easements to take that further north if we needed to. You can actually go to the cemetery, go over the ridge, and get into this bike and hiking complex. This is a little bigger context. This is the FOP shooting range right here, so you say we go there. But if you stay up here and skirt the top of the ridge, you could eventually come out at Donna Ho Sheraway and never see a vehicle. Like I say, the child development center is in the old, old high school. We need to do better than that. Our seniors, this is just a canned photograph, but our seniors meet one Wednesday a month, play bingo and have lunch, have a good time. A lot of them bring covered dishes. If you do that once a month, we could expand that to once a week. Every Wednesday could be senior day. Then they go to the store and catch all the sales. Our schools, this is our newest school, it's twenty years old. Mr. Cunningham can address any issues that we have about that. It was built in conjunction with the city. The city partnered with the schools in nineteen-ninety-seven. We built the rec center, they built schools, they touched, they physically joined. That's the gem for the school, but we're paying for it. Nothing wrong with that. We've been paying for it for twenty years, it's been a good arrangement. So we can help do things like that. We've done it in the past, we can do it again. This is my propaganda stuff. We're in a position to move to the next level for our community, and our is all of us. We heard all these ideas and requests last year. We can improve Fort Payne. That's what we promised we'd do, and it's time to do that. But to go forward, we've gotta have more revenue than's coming in now. That's the bottom line. The last sales tax increase was nineteen-eighty-four. A one-penny sales tax increase in Fort Payne right now will bring us to everybody else around us, and will generate approximately two-point-eight million dollars at current levels. That funding could be allocated as we see fit as a body to do any or all of these projects and anything else we need to do. We just don't have it to do right now. This is a long-range plan, but it would have short-term results. You would see immediate results within a year on some of these plans. Our complex was built in eighty-six, the pool was built about the same time, then we had to go back and buy them in two thousand and two thousand and two. Our new rec center's twenty years old, our new rec center. Our major capital improvements over the last thirty years have all been funded by bonds. That's the way to go. That's the best way to go, best use of money. We can do all these projects in that same way with bond money, but we have to have money to make those bond payments. Our infrastructure needs upgrading, we need more money for commercial development, we[1743.80] need more money to be competitive as an industrial recruiter. We have $212,000 in our industrial development fund to go out and try to hook somebody. That's not gonna do much in this day and time. In 1967, our parents and grandparents made a bold decision and they got a property tax to fund the school system in Fort Payne. 30 years later, they came back and overwhelmingly kept it in place, and it's just what's funding our school system today. They did a seven and a half mil property tax, we're just only talking about a penny right now. And by the way, a mil of property tax to show you the diversity of some communities, a mil in Fort Payne, the last date I had was $162,000, and Coleman is $280,000. That's the difference in communities. So if you wanna know why some communities have more money than others, it's because of disparities like that. If you can improve the quality of life for every group, make people wanna come to this community, improve safety, health, and education, and give your community the great majority of things that they long for, then why wouldn't you? You can do all this by raising the tax just to the level of the people around us. We're not going ahead of anybody, we're just catching up. Talladega's at five cents, we're talking about going to four. Ozark is at four. Alexander City's four. Coleman is a half a cent city sales tax, but guess what? The county collects three and a half cents for them, and they get $17 million in revenue off of it. So everything's got an asterisk, you gotta dig to find out the backstory. Scottsboro has three cents. Jackson County collects two cents and gives a third of that money to the Scottsboro School Board, who in turn gives $1.4 million to the Scottsboro City to pay the bonds that they floated to pay for the school. Hartsell's at four. Garden Dale's four. Serreland's four and a half. Ufala's four. Pell City's at five. And then you see the little asterisks down here. We're talking about going to four. That would take us to nine cents, which is where Rainsville's been for years. I'm not talking about leapfrogging anybody, I'm talking about catching up and moving our city forward, and we've gotta make that decision as a group of how far we wanna go. So we can improve Fort Payne, this will allow us to do all of these projects, we can prioritize those and do the ones we need to do as soon as we need to do them, but it also allows us to partner with the school system where they need to do some major overhaul renovation. Their money's tied up till 2026 on the bond issue. They can't get any more money right now on property tax without voting for a new property tax. The climate's not there for that. Nobody around us has approved that lately. People just don't wanna improve quality of life by having to pay another $30 a year property tax. It's just not gonna happen in most communities. But this penny's not gonna hurt anybody. And I've heard the arguments of, okay, you're gonna pass sales tax, give all the money to schools? No. I just went through an hour of city projects that need to be funded and done if we're gonna move to the next level in our community. When we get to the point of discussing things with the schools, Mr. Cunningham and his group have a program, and they have a proposal for us on how they wanna address certain things. If they're gonna do anything to improve, we're gonna have to fund that, we're gonna have to fund that some way, and it can be part of this sales tax. And I say a part. You can't commit money you don't have yet, and you can't commit all of this right now and hope that it stays good. You have to be very conservative of this, but we've got some plans in place where we can do spot things, we can do $5 million increments of bonds if we need to. We don't have to go borrow $50 million, which this penny would fund. I'm not talking about borrowing $50 million in bond money and pay for it with this $2.8 million that a penny will fund, that gives us nothing to keep the city going forward or raises. Like I said, the city payroll's about a half a million dollars every two weeks. Those people want a raise every now and then, they deserve a raise every now and then. We can't commit so much of this money to other things that we can't take care of our citizens and our employees. This'll take care of everybody. We just have to decide as a group how we're gonna prioritize that, and what we're gonna do, and, and what way we're gonna go.